You're good to go.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for showing up. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, State of Arizona. This is being held on Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, at 7:00 PM at our Council chambers. Real call, please.
Councilmember Juanetta Hill. Councilmember Joni Jacomino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sui.
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Matthew Gurney, public works director, Tim Cox, police chief, Jim Richardson, fire chief, Joe Estes, city attorney.
Thank you, everyone. For a moment of silence tonight, I'm going to ask everyone just to stand and give some thoughts either to what's in front of you or the people that we have over across the season that were affected by that horrible earthquake. So after that, we'll turn and do the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone could please stand and put them on.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if you will indulge your mayor for a moment, I have a couple of items I'd like to bring forward to the public. As some of you may know, and we in the political world really know, is that our state lawmakers are meeting currently up at the state Capitol. And Lord almighty, there are a lot of things that are in the works that could do some definite damage to us. So first thing is they're imposing the elimination of local government food and rental taxes, believing this would provide relief for inflation for our residents. Why this would reduce your grocery bill 3%, it would reduce our general fund by over 8%. To put it into dollars, if both of these were to pass, it would decrease our city revenue by $600,000. We would need to make up that revenue in other taxes. I'm not sure how we could do that, but or we would need to make cuts in services. Public safety would not be spared from these cuts. Fire and police are our largest expense, using upwards of one half of our general fund. Other general fund spending areas like libraries, parks, senior center, and public works would certainly be impacted also. Another bill before them would prohibit the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, from using federal funding for bicycle or pedestrian paths along the highway or state route construction. It also restricts ADOT from building separate bicycle paths, pedestrian walkways parallel to existing highways or state routes. As we, as you know, we've gotten over $8 million to start trying to tie our communities together. This could be a devastating effect to that. So if you truly care about these services, and I'm going to be talking to not only residents, but organizations, please let your local elected legislators know and others that you oppose these type of bills. Just to give you the numbers, if you're interested, for the food bills, it's HB 2061 and SB 1063. For the rental tax, it's HB 2067 and SB 1164, which is actually already passed and is sitting at the governor's desk assigned. SB 1697 is the highway bicycle path bill from the representative out of Buckeye. There's also many other things up there facing us, possible cuts in corporate income tax reductions, which would be tax breaks to big companies, and it would cut our state share revenue by up to $200,000. So if you think about this all put together, just these three bills would cut over $800,000 out of our budget. That's 10% of our entire general fund. And there's no way we can make that up. It would cut services. So with that, I just encourage everybody to again, try to emphasize to make these decisions, to leave these decisions to be made by local government, the people you elected here to run your city, not the state to come over the top of us. Just one really other really quick note, I just want to get it back out. If the press is listening, we have a short-term rental permit law that's in place now ordinance. So far, only 39 people have applied. I know we have more than 39 Airbnbs in this town, and I would really appreciate if they would come in and get their permit before we have to start coming down hard on them and start to need to produce fines. So please, anyone that knows anybody, or if you own an Airbnb or any other short-term rental, please come and get your permit. And please remember that that permit number has to be published on anything that you advertise in. All right. That's more announcements than I normally make, but I thought that was important for us to cover. So at this point, move on. I'll do a call to the public. One person signed up for call. That will be Fred Miller.
Good evening, council. I'm just feels like Oregon weather here. I don't know. So I'm going to talk about Agenda Six. I'm sorry I can't stay. I've got another engagement. Agenda item six is asking for council approval of a five-year contract with Bisbee Vogue. And I oppose this contract as written and urge you to have a work session or in some way bring more notice to the public about the conditions of the contract and the impact to residents. This is, I believe, the first time that the city is considering a long-term contract with an organization such as this. And I continue to support Bisbee Vogue in hosting the Bisbee 1000 race. Several years ago, I served on the board for four years and was a director for one. And the race has grown substantially since that time, and it's a boon for Bisbee in many ways, not the least financially. However, my opposition to the contract stems from what the city is providing outlined in number three of the contract, and that is the duration, five years, is too long. The prohibition of any other permits during the third week in October at several city venues, City Park, Grassy Park, Higgins Hill is overly broad. And the 48-hour access to the event sites, as written, mean that those venues are not usable for residents or any other organization. So and I question whether the venues are necessary for the actual operation of the race. Grassy Park and City Park particularly seem to be race-adjacent venues and may be included as a possibility for expansion on non-race events. I do understand that Bisbee Vogue wants to have security to continue operations. I support that. I also understand the concern for blocking other permits during this time. And for other organizations and individuals to snatch up those venues for events that would piggyback on the successful Bisbee 1000. To resolve some of this, at a minimum, I suggest these contract modifications. During another contract, two years with a review in early 2025 as to how it's operating, see whether it's operating as it's supposed to be, as you pass eventually. Ensuring that all the venue mentioned are being used for race activities and not a race-adjacent activities. I'm not sure tying up a City Park or something for a beer venue is the best way to use that facility for residents. It might be, I don't know. I think giving insurance to residents that prior access to necessary sites will be done with as little disruption as possible. And I think giving Bisbee Vogue first dibs on permits for those venues before issuing to any other organization. And I think something, doing something like that, some safeguards so that Bisbee Vogue understands and knows that they will have first dibs.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. I haven't been up here for a while. That's new.
We dug it out of the dust, didn't we?
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, Fred. Moving on, we will, we have, it's like five people signed up for number 10, but we'll move on first to the next item, which is item one, which is accounts payable. I have a motion for accounts payable.
I approve that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $219,545.35.
Second?
Thank you. We have questions on accounts payable tonight. All right. So we have a motion and a second for accounts payable for $219,545.35. Real call, please.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. So move. Moving on to item two, this is the approval of the consent agenda. We have four items tonight. Item one is approval of the minutes of our February 21st council session. Item two will be a right-of-way use permit for Bisbee Pride for Gore Park. Item three, number C, is the extension of premise patio permit for electric brewing. And then B is a approval of a special liquor license for the friends of the Bisbee Animal Shelter. Does anybody have anything they would like to discuss in that pool? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda as Agenda Six.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through D. Second?
Now, the motion is second to approve the consent agenda items A through B. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye. Seeing none, the ayes have it. So move. Moving on to old business. This is item number three. This is discussion, possible approval of ordinance O-23-02. So many and additions to the Bisbee zoning code in relation to the new design and review board developmental standards for the Bisbee Arizona Historic District. This is the second reading. We've seen the new standards, and these are the changes within the code that will meet those new standards. Do we have questions or comments? All right. Without any, I move to approve ordinance O-2302 of any and additions to the Bisbee zoning code in relation to design and review board developmental standards for Bisbee Arizona Historic District.
Please second.
I have a motion and second to approve item three as listed. I need a real call on this.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Jacomino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sui.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Without objection from the council, I'd like to move Agenda Item 10 up to the next item. Since we have five people signed up to speak to this, it would help move things along for the people that are here, not just sit through the rest of it. They don't tend to. So do we have any objection? If not, I'll move on to item 10. Item 10 is a discussion on our pool. I could either have the people come up and talk to it now, or we, or I could, let our public works director kind of let you know what we're up against, and then I'm going to let you speak, and then you'll have more information. Would that be okay with you? Okay. Matthew, would you come up and kind of lay things out for us, and I'll get these speakers? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and everyone else, and all your support to the Bisbee pool. So this is something that we don't really want to do, but something that we're just at the point where we, there's nothing else we can do at this point. The Bisbee pool will need to be closed for the summer of 2023. As of now, towards the end of the pool season, the pumps, the pump system failed, causing the pool to close early, which I think most of everybody knows that. The pool is also faced with the following repairs and updates. Since we had the pump go down, there's been other things that we were addressed by with the county before that happened, that there's a flow rate that the water has to go through the pump system at a certain rate. And before the pump went down, we were already not meeting that. The county had said by next year, if we don't have it up where the flow rate should be, then we will not be able to open. So our turnover rate is not sufficient for the regulations. There's also updates to the electrical system in the entire building that needs to be done. We had an electrical engineer come out with our local on-call engineer, not local, local Tucson engineer, and they said, along with APS and our local electrician in town, said that the entire building will need, really should have an overhaul of the electrical system, along with a pump and motor replacement. We did have a quote for our engineer to do a preliminary engineering report on that, on the pool, the pump system, and the electrical system. And that, just to get that preliminary engineering report, is $27,000. $27,000. So with that, right now, I mean, we only have for the month and a half that we usually are running in this fiscal year, $11,000 right now. So what I proposed to the Parks Committee a week ago is to not open for the summer of 2023 and take that money and allocate it to trying to fix the pump, the pool system. Now, otherwise, there's no, if I still have a pump in there, I can't even open it because it doesn't make, it doesn't get the right flow rate or anything. So there's no point in doing that and then just getting shut down anyway. So that's pretty much the rough part of it. There's other stuff that needs to be fixed. This is an old pool, I believe 19, around 1969 is when it was built. So that's what, if anything else, say, any questions?
We'll bring you back up for our questions. I'm going to let the public speak, and then yeah, I have a couple. So let's start with Holly Kemp. Would you like to come up after three minutes?
Thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity here. In these difficult times, money for a swimming pool might seem frivolous to sign. However, I can assure you that the individuals of all ages that use this swimming pool find it quite uncomfortable. It's not only really important for health, but it's really psychologically beneficial to the community. What I heard, I went almost every day, both last summer and the summer before, and what I heard so many people say is how happy it made them and how, how much stress it relieved from them to be able to get into the pool. And I know this is just a really difficult time, but I just encourage you to please do everything possible. It serves a lot of different purposes, and it means a lot to us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Holly. Next one is Tate Rich.
Hi, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me, sir. Tate Rich, 536, Tombstone Canyon. A couple things. Community pools have many benefits, physically, mentally, emotionally, and socially for the health of the community. Swimming pools offer a mean of social interaction, relaxation, and stress relief. They give an opportunity to participate in an aerobic, yet low-impact, exercise. Swimming pools also increase safety in communities, as no one dies from not being able to play basketball. But swimming is more than just an exercise, it's a life-saving skill. Additionally, it combats childhood obesity. Pools have the ability to bring diverse people and groups together to play and exercise in one place, and it encourages fitness for the entire family. City pools also directly add to the recreational and more importantly, the property values here in the city of Bisbee. Just by having a pool, our property values are worth more. People want to live near fun things to do, and they also want to live in communities that have strong bonds with each other, because that's what makes a community feel safe and inviting. Additionally, it creates jobs. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you guys figure out how to get the money for a swimming pool.
Thank you, Tate. I think we have a, Patricia? Is that right? Just state your full name, and I don't need an address. I just need to know if you're a Bisbee resident or...
Okay. Thank you very much for your time. My name is Patricia Lee See, and I live on Tombstone Canyon. I've been here since the early January of 19, and I have two grandchildren, one that's four and one that's 12. And it has been a very key element for us in engaging in the community, bringing our children into knowing where the other children are in this community, because there are a few. And it's been very nice to watch the high schoolers have an opportunity to have responsibility and have a job. And I've watched them grow over the summers and have a, to interact with the children, as well as, you know, any age, especially older, being able to swim laps and have a place to go and be physical. It adds an element to that whole part. You've spent a lot of money on the exercise equipment there, and it would just be a shame to see it not kept as a priority, because it is a community active, or it's a community key in bringing people together. Hopefully, you will do what you need to do through this next year to make sure that it can be reopened up. And I, for one, would help in the community in any type of community fundraiser or anything that needed to support that, the continuation of the pool.
Thank you. And another one of your, is your daughter or some?
No, we're good.
You're good?
She did it once. Well, thank you.
Your mom handled it.
Yeah.
One more. This is Michael Baxter. Thanks. Come on up.
Michael Baxter. So I have a 12-year-old son, four-year-old daughter, and they love the pool. And my grandma swims, and it's perfect for aquatics for her, and it gives them a place to go and hang out with friends and do aerobics and help their health. And to take it away, even for just one year, would be detrimental to them. They love it so much, and it's something that they all, at least when we go and want to do that. And it helps so much, and to take it away would be wrong, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right. With that, I'll let you come back up.
Oh, yes, sir. Just one minute. Just so everyone is clear.
Is your mic on?
Test, test. Battery's kind of in.
Thank you, Matt.
Just so we're clear, what staff's priorities are moving forward. Matt made a comment a minute ago that we have less money in the budget for the pool than we have for the engineering costs. We're going to reappropriate the money from someplace else to get it done, okay? The pool is used to working from year to year on a specific budget, and we don't anticipate large failures of equipment, which is what has occurred here. So we're going to need some time to engineer a solution, buy the equipment, implement that solution. But it is our commitment to you that we will reopen the pool as soon as it's fixed. So I just, I just didn't want anybody to think that we were even contemplating a part of closure, which we are not.
I hate to call it a perfect storm, but we've kind of lived by the grace of the county for a while, and, and our flow rates, the pool was not built before the new flow rate requirements. And why do we have a chocolate tasting library fundraiser this year because of the county and their new rules? And so they're starting to come over the top of us like the state does and tries to tell us how we, where we know our pool has been fine for 30, 40 years, okay? But with that being said, I'm, you know, I'm all behind it. I'm not, not supportive, and I'll let everybody else speak to it. We all have to remember, it isn't just the repairs of the pool. Our pool last year, well, so far, just from the pool season that we've had this year, we have spent $43,000. 34 of it was for employment. Because of the lower minimum wage, we, we have to pay a minimum wage, and it's only right. And so that was $35,000 just for the lifeguards. So then I just got notice from the water company that they'll be raising their rate somewhere around 30% on water, so on all of us. Yeah. So this is what we face up here as we try to juggle all this together. But, but my commitment is it's one thing that I feel that needs to, needs to happen, and my direction to staff myself, but I will listen to everybody else, and taking a kind of run of it, is that I want to start getting true, good bids so we can find out exactly where we're at and how fast we can get it done. And that's what I, who knows? Maybe we can get part of the pool season, maybe we can do something. Okay. All right. I'm going to throw it over the back, because I know you must have some...
Oh, I have a lot to say.
Okay.
But I'll let Leslie speak first.
Oh, okay. We'll start on that end.
Okay. Well, I have, first, I just wanted to say that thank you, all of you, for so much for coming and for caring about our pool. And I don't think there's anybody in this room who wants that pool to close. I grew up in that pool. I learned to swim in that pool. I spent all my summers in that pool. I love it very much. And I think I can speak for all of us. We want to keep the pool open. But thank you for coming. Just, I wanted to let you know that's where we are. And then Matt, I have a specific question for you. I looked up the flow rate law, and it's eight hours. And what is our pool currently flowing at?
Can't tell you the exact numbers. I just know we're not meeting it.
We're not meeting it. Okay.
And there, I'm going to speak in here. And there is, we're not 100% positive on this yet, that it is going to be jumping up to six here soon. That's not right now, but that is something that we were told.
Okay. So that was my only question. I'll defer to Joni.
So I'll do a little history for y'all on the city pool. Back in 2013, the city decided to close the pool because they didn't have the finances to do it. So an organization called LEAP stepped up, and we ran the pool for two years. In that process, we were told and enlightened the city that the flow rate needed to be fixed then. That was 10 years ago, along with a new roof, and along with a deck, and a few other things. At that time, we had the specific specs on the pool and the whole layout, but they had magically disappeared after a certain public works person, I'll choose not to mention, left. And so did the specs to the pool. There are output valves that have not been opened in years. We asked for them to be open. They're on the inside of the pool, which could increase possibly if those lines still work. We were told then that if we extended the run on the pump, that that was a possibility that it might increase it also. This was never done. If anything, the line was shortened. We lost our grandfather clock. This is what we were told by ADOT when the lines froze because of improper wind rising. And that was because of the one public works person, I don't even have names. In the process, running a pump 24/7 takes wear and tear on your pump system, and I have continued to complain about that year after year. Douglas does not run his pool outside year-round. It shuts its output Douglas does not run its pool outside year-round. It shuts its outdoor pool down, therefore helping to conserve some of the life of that pump. That pump should not be running year-round. That's one way that you could salvage part of the life of that pump.
Yep. And it's not run year-round?
Um, really? It happened. The last few years, it was, you guys drain it and you turn it completely off. Because we sure weren't doing that when Jesus Harold was here. It was running it year-round.
The last few years, we've been...
Well, that's a nice change, because it wasn't.
Yes.
So, my question is, why are we here when we've known about this for over ten years? Every year, it's February, "Oh, wow, we have emergency, we need to get fixes down in the pool." Every year. And you may smile and smirk about it, but, uh, I worked at that pool in two thousand and two until I took it over and ran it for two years and then walked away and went to Douglas. There is no reason why this pool should be at this position, other than, excuse my French, piss poor planning. And that's where I have an issue. There is no reason why the people of Bisbee and the children, especially of Bisbee, should not have a swimming pool.
I said that.
We have neglected that pool, which, that pool is one of the best pools. It was built with the, um, I can't remember the grant. It's exactly like the pool in Miami, it's exactly like the pool in Globe. Every pool around the mining towns got this specific grant, I can't think what's filed from the state, and they were put in about the same time. Unfortunately, we have not put the money that needed to be put into it. It sits on a, a edge of a hill, that if you decide to do any kind of major repairs, I'm sorry, and I'll argue with any architect, unless you shore that up for thousands of dollars, you're gonna lose it into the county parking lot. If anything, you choose to close that pool down, again, that's a choice you're making that's unfortunately gonna adversely affect the city. Dumping more money into it is not gonna fix it unless you do it properly or you build a new pool. And building a pool, a new pool up on that hill is not gonna cut it. Behind Safeway or somewhere else would be a better place. But not opening that pool is not doing justice to the city. You don't know the flow rate?
Yes.
Why not? Because when I was there, we were just shy of the flow rate. That's why we got the lax that we got. And that's when we were told, if you extend the run, there's a possibility. If you look at opening those other outflow and all they are, the little circles in the wall, again, you just pop them open through forty-seven layers of paint. What, you know, what would it hurt to try? You know, that, that's my question. Why haven't more avenues been, um, looked into? You know, you guys are talking about spending twenty-seven thousand dollars, yeah, you need it, it needs to be rewired. Oh, wait a minute, that was told to the city more than ten years ago. Because we have the big old hunkin' fuses that we kept blowing regularly. We were told then it needed to be replaced. Yet, here we are, with the same system, year after year. And it's like, you talk to your blue in the face and everybody gives you the bobble head, "Oh, yeah, yeah." But nothing gets done. And now we're back to ten years ago, shutting the pool down. What are you gonna provide for the kids? Don't tell me, boys and girls, but, because that was the excuse last time. You know, are we gonna, do we have a splash pad? We have nothing. We live in the desert, it's hot. Well, the kids are gonna have to drive to Sierra Vista, they're gonna have to drive to Douglas. You know, what, what are we doing for our kids? Taking away their swimming pool. Sorry, but, need to be negative here, but, um, it just, just really torches me really bad. Um, I train guards in this county. It is a lucrative job for teenagers and we're taking that aspect away also. These kids are gonna have to drive to Sierra Vista, which you could city, or to Douglas, if they can even get hired. We're like, we're almost getting late in the season. Everyone else is already opening up. I'm getting ready to start a class in Douglas to train their lifeguards down there. You know, I, it just, I just get tired of time after time. It's put on the back burner and everything else seems to be more important. It's been the stepchild forever. And it just needs to change. I'm sorry. That's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi.
Sure. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm gonna be a little hard, but not personally. If you're working for me, I'll fire you. For one thing, you stood here, she asked you about the flow rate, you tell us we're not up to standard and you did not manage, you did not even find out what, what the flow rate is.
Yeah, like...
Let me, let me continue with this. You knew about this last summer, what, uh, what Johnny was saying. I mean, she said it longer. I don't wanna go that long. You knew we had a problem since last summer. You come in February and you announce, "We can fix it," excuses. If you're working for me, I will tell you now, and I'm gonna say it, and I don't care what anybody says, that's how I feel, I will fire you. I will fire you on the spot. Because what Johnny said, what they're saying, you come in with excuses. When you are in the manager position, you don't come, you come with solution. Matt, you don't come here giving us excuses. You should come with solution. That's why we pay you. That's why we have managers. For us, to tell us, the city of Bisbee that has nothing for kids, the only thing they have is swimming pool. And you giving excuses, "We have to close it, we don't have the finances." Steve said it at the beginning and I appreciate what he said. We come find the finances, we can really direct them. This is what management is. You have to be able to think outside of the box, not just say, "We only have twenty-one thousand." I'm sure, I'm sure we can find it from somewhere else. But let me tell you, Matt, this is, everybody's upset, but I will tell you what, having been a manager managing people, I will fire you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Go ahead. I would have appreciated, I saw that we're gonna close this. I would have appreciated, um, coming here with suggestions, um, options to keep it open. What we need, uh, concrete ideas as opposed to, um, we don't have enough money and this is why it has, it has deteriorated and we cannot keep it open. All right. What do we need to do? Are there grants available? Are there other resources available? Shall we, uh, galvanize people in the community? Because Bisbee is a primary age group, our senior citizen, so fifty-five. We have very limited options for children in this community. We have a culture now of Airbnbs that we're dealing with. But individuals that want to come here and live here and families here would have to be able to all, offer them more than adults hungry goat. I would appreciate options that we can fund this. And there's some hope and some direction, uh, rather than lack of limitation. Have you had an opportunity to look at possible options to fund the repairs that we need to have done? And then, long-term financial objectives to maintain the pool once the repairs are done.
Okay, sorry. I'm just trying. Okay. The financials that I can see in my, um, department, um, is the parks department, the pool department. And what I, I have in, in my arsenal of funds. Um, for our next, our next fiscal year's funds, it's fifty-four, fifty, just under fifty-four thousand dollars. That's what I see and that's what I worked, have worked with, what I see.
And it's to maintain the park and the pool requires how much?
It's fifty-four thousand fiscal year.
Okay, for the park and the pool.
Hannah, you have any?
I do. Um, and I appreciate what everybody up here has, has said. I don't think, and Leslie's right and I agree with her, that nobody wants to see the pool closed. However, you know, if we need repairs, we need repairs. And as to Winetta's, you know, question of looking at other options, I think Mr. Pocken has said that, that we are going to look at other options and trying to get the funding to get this fixed. But nobody knows how to run a pool like Johnny. I mean, she's done it, she's done it forever. Um, and, and she's right, these, these things have built up over time and we should never be at this point, right now. This should have been taken care of and whether it was past it, you know, public works directors, current, whatever, you know, we need, we need to work on it. Um, and there are a lot of people that use the pool. I mean, I grew up at that pool, I learned how to swim there. My kids did, my grandkids did. And I even have one granddaughter that was, um, taught to be a lifeguard there. So, and she uses that every summer. So, it is important to the community because we don't have a lot to offer anymore. Um, and I know that a lot of older people do use the pool, but we do have to remember that this pool was built for the children of the community. And, and that's where our focus should be. I mean, I know that everybody else gets a benefit from it, but our focus should be on the kids. And, um, so, I just, I mean, I hope that we do everything that we can to make the repairs as soon as possible, so maybe we can salvage at least part of the season.
Yes, the goal is, if, if we can, yes, I would love to open it. I don't want it closed as much as anybody. It's, I see, I go down there at least once a week during the summer and see all the kids, see all the adults and every... Like, we've heard, everybody loves the pool and I, I, I do understand that. Um, one of the things that, um, Johnny had mentioned is the flow rate and that we were just under, yes, we were just under what that, that eight-hour cutoff. The county is not allowing us the grant to be grandfathered in.
I get that. My, my, what I said to you also was, they told us that years ago and they said to elongate the line. My suggestion, you want a suggestion, is to go in that pool and pop all those caps. They're on this inside of the pool, they're about this big around. Those were old outlet valves. When you reverse the flow on the pool, when you're vacuuming, you could hook up directly to those and then reverse it sucked out. Those are all the old outputs that ran off of the main lines. If they're still viable, that will increase the pool, flow of your pool. I have said that for ten years, but nobody would do it. There's possibly they won't work, they might be corroded, but is it gonna hurt to try?
No.
At this point, no. They screw in, there are caps that screw in, you're gonna have to cut through probably about eight layers of paint. But if it's something that's gonna work, you might as well try it. It's better than doing nothing.
The first person I've heard say, mention anything about...
Whatever bothers their ass.
But, but you need, uh, Matt, I have to say something. You need to, you, you need to manage...
Please, please, be recognized.
Okay, all right, all of a sudden, I need, okay. Um, because, because, uh, I believe this. My question is, I need to answer this. Why did you wait till February? You, you mentioned in your statement, you knew about it last summer, we have a problem. We had, uh, July, August, September, October, November, this, why did you wait till February? This is what, uh, this is what's making me a little upset. Why are you waiting till February to tell us this?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, thank you. He didn't, okay? Uh, we've worked with, uh, the engineers and various other interests in the community, plus with our public works parks people who routinely maintain the pool. Uh, we were looking for solutions, um, that would, um, some of which have been mentioned here, uh, that would, uh, increase the flow to make the, what is it, six-hour turnover rate?
Eight-hour.
Eight-hour turnover rate, I'm sorry.
No, you're...
And then, when none of those solutions seem to work, then we have to resort to calling the engineers in. So, um, it, it's not a case, and Matt's been keeping me up to date with what he's been doing. And there's been something going on every month in the past year and up to, up, up to now. Perhaps not every day, but every week and every month. And so, uh, we were, we were trying very hard to use existing resources to fix the issue. And we've just reached the point recently where we realized that we're not gonna get there.
I mean, uh, uh, my answer, I know you're like, Mayor, so I can ask.
Yeah.
Uh, my, my, my concern is, and sadly, uh, you know, sometime when I'm questioning things on financial and making decisions, it seems like we wait for the last second. Management is supposed to prevent this. He's supposed to come up with a solution. My concern, and that's the reason I get upset, you come here and you tell us about the problem, what are we supposed to do? You are supposed to come with a solution. That's what, that's what managers are supposed to do. Not for us who basically know something, a little something about something, but you come and tell us, well, and you announce it. Even though now I'm a little confused, so the public, for the public to know. Uh, because Steve, at the beginning, you said, "We're working on this, we can have the finances from other, you can find a way to bring it." But Matt said at the beginning, "We don't have it, we have to close the pool for the summer." So, not, the reason I'm telling you this, I have tens of people keep seeing me between the last two, three days. So, this is not coming from nothing, okay?
Yeah.
And, and, and when I'm speaking is what I've heard and what I was told and what I know as a manager. My question is, you, we come here and we just announce it and like, not, if a city of Bisbee cannot provide a swimming pool, come on, what are we all doing here? We can just tell, "Oh, we don't have, we can't afford, you know, we can't do a swimming pool for you because of whatever." You're supposed to come up with a solution. I'm, I'm sure Steve will find the resources for the money. Now, let's come up, we have till three, four months. Let's see what we can do in the three, four, four months.
And we are, we're working on it.
No, but you're saying we're gonna be closing. You have to, you have to distinguish. You can't say we're gonna close the pool because this what, what, it was announced, but by twenty-twenty-three and come here, say we're working on it. In order to stop the confusion, we have to be clear, so the public can know what we're doing.
At the same time, I do, if I'm going to work, working on engineering, I'm gonna, I mean, we're gonna be getting those funds, I can't be starting with hiring employees if I don't even know if I'm gonna be open or not at the same time.
So, you guys have known about this. I guess the concern is, the last-minute comment is, why haven't we been kept abreast of this since the beginning?
Yeah.
That's why it seems like it's a last-minute thing. You've known about this concern in December, even November. You knew that there was this concern. Why didn't you come to council and say, "Okay, this is where we're at right now, it's November. It's not looking good for the swimming pool." And then maybe people could have stepped forward then. That's the last-minute issue. It's always, "Oh, we're working on it over here." Where if had you made it public then, you know, maybe there could have been other solutions. Maybe fundraising could have been started then by some of the people, the friends of the pool. They're always willing to raise money, as you know, they always. But they are, they've been very good about raising money. Maybe, you know, some of the situations or some of the, the, the solutions, maybe I would have told you then about the caps on the side of the pool. You know, I, I mean, there's all these things that could have happened back then and tried. And, "Oh, they don't work, so let's look for something else." You know, you can go talk to some of the people in Douglas. What are they doing with their old archaic pool? Because they're in a situation with the outdoor pool right now too. They don't know if they're gonna open it or close it, but they at least have a backup pool. You know, what have other places done? Have you even looked at that? These are suggestions that could have been made back in November. You know, as far as I knew, all that you guys were doing was looking for grants to build a new swimming pool.
Yeah.
That's the rumor that's out on the street.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why my comment came up about, you're gonna be a fool to try to build it up on that side of that hill, because it's gonna end up in the county. You know, and that's what I told them when they were talking about that. You need to find a new location. There's no way you can modify it. So, that's all that we knew that was going on. Not that, you know, you have money to buy a new pump, okay, that's great. My question has always been, why hasn't that run been extended? You don't even know what I'm talking about when I say the run? Uh, okay, so, the pump's right here, there's a little U.
Yes.
Runs, that's the run. That run used to go all the way almost to the back of the wall. We were told then to take the run all the way to the back of the wall and what did Andy do? But he shortened it. He made it even smaller when the pipes blew and we grandfathered out because of the broken pipes. And that was one of the suggestions that they made. They also said you can't necessarily force more water through a small pipe, that was the other issue. Henceforth, again, why we kept saying to pop the caps on the inside of the pool. Somebody said that the pipes aren't good, you aren't gonna know until you run water through them. And they still may be able to rotototer them out. Again, you could have been doing this back in November. Instead of now, here we are, February, and the pool normally opens in May. That is the biggest issue and that's why you're being thrown at. It's always the last minute. Because the communication process to us is very poor.
All right. Thank you, everybody. My last comment would be, I was here when the pool closed in two thousand thirteen, well, well... Yeah, and we knew it had problems then. And so, I'll be the first to say, I'm partly the problem too. We can't all sit up here and say, "Oh, it's all their fault." We also... We also step up and say, we've run many budgets since then and said, put more money towards it. Now, they have to bring that suggestion to us, but I know the pool's had some problems, but not, not to the extent. But I'm here to tell, I'm, I'm gonna accept some of the responsibility myself because I should have been more on top of it. So, um, with that going forward, let's, uh, I think you've heard this is a pretty top priority and we'd like you to put all, all elbows to it. And please bring us back and report as soon as possible on what you, what we can do and possible amounts. So, City Manager Pocken, if you can work that, we appreciate that.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, everybody. That's a hard one and not gonna get a seizure. All right. Move back to, uh, to new business. We're going to have the item number four, which is a public hearing on increase of the transaction privilege tax from 2.5 to 3.5 percent. I don't know, Karen needs to, uh, I'll, I'll hold the public hearing, but it's basically what we, what the voters.
Guess I need to bring W D forty next time. Yes, got it.
All right, lost my J F O. This was voted on in November by the citizens and was kindly passed that we got to keep the sales tax of 3.5 percent since it was sunsetting. So this is the official, um, process needed to come before and make this happen so that it can move up to the state who collects it for us. So with that, I'm gonna open a public hearing, um, and ask, uh, if any members of the public in support of this item, they may come up and speak towards it. Seeing that, I'll ask if any members of the public are in opposition of this item. Ask them to come forward. And, uh, City Clerk, has there been any written communication on this?
No, sir.
All right. Without any written communication and no other comments, I'll close this public hearing and open up for discussion among council members. Anybody have comments? Or concerns on item four? One thing I will say, this is, this is done under an emergency, right? And that's in order to get it to stay on time, so we don't have to go through it twice. So this is a note, this is not really a notice of intent, is it? Is, is passage of?
It's an ordinance, yes. Just the ordinance, not the notice of intent.
It's a separate agenda.
Yes, number five. It's two separate, the public hearing and then the ordinance.
Oh, so I will close the public hearing and move on to item five.
We're trying to keep you on your toes.
All right, so this is possible approval ordinance O dash 2301. Ordinance of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County Coachese, saying we're already increasing the transaction privilege tax. The ordinance of T P T to, from two and a half to three and a half percent. Not really, it's three and a half now, or it's, it would fall back to two and a half if this were not to, to pass. Anything from staff?
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We will, um, basically, uh, the, the prior one cent sales tax, which was dedicated a hundred percent to streets and infrastructure, uh, will sunset at the end of this month. And because the voters approved, uh, essentially a renewal of that one cent sales tax with the provision that, uh, the sales tax would be spent about half on streets and infrastructure and about half to assist in paying off the bond issue that paid off the public safety retirement system debt. It is scheduled to pick up on March first. So that's the sequence of events and of course, uh, by state law, we're required to do the public hearing that we just did and adopt an ordinance, uh, tonight, if you choose to.
All right, open for discussion. Seeing that, I will ask the City Clerk, if you look at what's before us, it says notice of intent ordinance on the. We, I thought we would need to strike that.
We'll, we'll strike that.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance O dash 2301 as an emergency measure, adopting an increase to the transaction privilege tax of two and a half to three and a half percent effective March first, 2023, striking the notice of intent that's before us.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O dash 2301 on the emergency basis. Phil call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Sui?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes six zero. Thank you. Moving on, number six is to discuss a possible approval of a five year agreement with Bisbee vote for Bisbee 1000 spare claim. Mr. Pocken, would you like to introduce this?
Um, actually, I'm going to defer to the City Attorney.
Okay.
I'll introduce this. So the city was approached by Bisbee vote to enter into a, a longer term agreement with regard to the Bisbee 1000 to ensure that they have the, those dates pretty much locked up for, for that event. I think probably seeing what's happened in the recent past with, uh, individuals rushing in and, and trying to reserve locations and dates that have historically been used for one thing and trying to reserve those for something else. So they requested a, uh, an agreement with the city that essentially says that we're, we're gonna recognize this specific, uh, time period, which has historically been for Bisbee votes, uh, with Bisbee 1000. The event's been going on for almost 20 years.
Thirty one.
Thirty. I'm, I'm still young. Give or take. Give or take a few decades.
I have to look it up.
So, yeah, it started in October 1990, so it's over 30 years. And it's been held annually. Uh, it's recognized. What this agreement does is it, it just acknowledges that and gives them that, that comfort of that we're, we're not gonna have conflicting issues where somebody comes in and says, you know, I wanna reserve this that's directly in, in the race, uh, path or, you know, something that drastically impacts, um, that, that outcome. They've requested those specific venues. We didn't have any discussion with regard to what events were going to be held at those, three specific city, uh, venues, Higgins Hill Park, Grassy Park and City Park. I just know this is a, a historical event that's been going on for 30 years. There's no reason to, to change things at this point if they've been using those locations for the events. Fine, uh, but again, it's up, up to council. They're just asking that, that they, they have the assurances and the ability to, to set up and, and run this event every year for, for the next five years.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
You betcha.
Is there any legal way that we could enact some kind of, I guess, grandfather clause? And if an organization has had this activity for five or more years, if they are the ones that get first bid on the location, and then if they choose not to do it, then it's open up. Is that legal to do something like that?
No. But this is, yeah, we can have agreements, but, I mean, cause you're talking public, public facilities. So there's, there's ways to work with it. This is one of, one of the ways that we can work with that to.
It just seems so extreme. It's unfortunate.
And it's unfortunate that you end up with competing organizations that, disagree with each other and then try to one up the other by coming in first and trying to reserve everything. You know?
It seems like when something's gone unwell, sometimes people come in and wanna go over the top of it. We just dealt with that with Bisbee Pride on a certain street. And I can see, I mean, I will make mention that I do remember why City Park was being requested is a few years ago, the, don't quote me, but I think it was the Quanas or somebody set up something there during the same weekend as the, as the Bisbee 1000. And just as the race started, they had trucks and stuff unloading things and blocked the whole street. And it was kind of a nightmare. So, yeah, that's, that could be a problem. So I.
And it, it makes it more difficult when it's not a, a specific city sponsored event. City sponsored events are a lot easier to, uh, to coordinate and, and restrict. There are, there are many cities that have, you know, Founder's Day events or, or different things that are sponsored specifically by the city, where they, they will not issue, uh, competing, uh, events. But when, when you have private entities and, and companies coming in and asking to use city facilities, it gets a little sticky.
So, yeah, questions?
So, um, would we enter, is this opening a doorway to other organizations? Bisbee Pride has had, um, several, had events annually for, I don't know how long. What if they approach the city and said, I would like an agreement for the next five years? Then because we've been doing this for X amount of time and contributing to the city overall.
That's a city council decision, actually. Just like this is a city council decision. You can, or you can reject this and, and say, no, we want an annual application. You know, it's, it's up to you guys. This is what's been requested. We've, we've presented it, we've drafted, drafted it, gone back and forth. Thank you. This is a.
This isn't our first. You should remember that the Saturday market, it's a full year. Every weekend, 52 weeks. This is one day a year. So this is similar to that same situation. I mean, that is a year by year basis, but it's 52 times that year. So, so if you have a certain events, I think, or, or, or people that have, have shown the ability to, to do something, I wanna make a leisure, not just for this, but for Pride or anybody else that can come in and, and not be worried about being able to put on their event that they put on for the last 20 years.
I don't see the, um.
Okay, just go ahead. Go ahead. You still have the floor.
I don't see the, um, park, just the park or as the same as this. They're in one location. They don't impact the traffic flow, et cetera. So we can come up with a, a different example, but that one I don't see as the same as.
It is a contract that we guarantee that area specifically for that purpose. And yes, if you talk to the people who live in Warren, it does affect traffic. Um, go ahead.
So I'm not comfortable with five years. I feel like we should do this for three years and it's mainly because I don't wanna stick the next council with a contract that they maybe don't agree with. I'm uncomfortable entering into any contract over the length of someone's term because Anna will probably still be here, but the rest of it. The rest of it's gonna change in the next three years.
Probably will.
Yeah, and so that's, that's my main reason for wanting to do this for two or three years instead of five years.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, this is one of the best events. As, as a merchant, I do benefit from it. But as a council person, I believe we cannot sell five years into the future. Totally against it. Totally against it. It should go because you're gonna have pride, you're gonna have packs. And this, this is what built this community. Maybe some people will perform. And there's nothing against it. Like I say, I do benefit from it. It's a great event. It brings a lot of people. But for us to mortgage ourselves for the next five years on a contract, that somebody is gonna say, well, I own these parks for these days, for the next five years, on this day, I'm not comfortable with it. I think we should keep it as it stands. They apply and like Fred Miller said in his, in his, uh, speak to the public, they can apply, you will always be given priority. For us, city to say, okay, five, for the next five years, you have those parks to whoever it may be. It's a wrong, it's a wrong thing to do and we set in a precedent. What's next? He'll come next time. You see, he's smiling. He's gonna, he's coming next year. Therefore, it's a no. It's a big no for me, so.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Back to the legal thing here. This is always gonna get an issue because there's always gonna be somebody that's gonna jump in and try to steal the fundraiser or try to steal the activity, cause we've seen it. I mean, it's, it's suck. Is there a legal way that we can put a timeframe? If you wanna have an event in June, we will start accepting applications. The deadline for your application will be November. And everybody has to put their applications in by that date. Then everybody gets them in at the same time and then we can look at them and, I don't know, it just, it doesn't seem fair because it's, if, if, if they time isn't put on it. Let me stutter. It's gonna be the same thing. Every year they're gonna be coming, oh, you know, he'll be here for, putting in for Pride for, you know, 2030 because he's gonna have to, because somebody's gonna try to, to get it from him. Does that make sense?
No. Yep, okay, makes sense. Don't sense, I mean. Huh?
You said no and yes. We speak to you next. Okay, go ahead.
No, it makes sense. You know, the issue is, as councilman, so it's a, where, where do you establish that priority? There is no priority. There's no council direction, give priority. Councils change. What if the next council doesn't wanna give that priority? You know, it, they're, they're wanting something to allow them to have, to be able to, to plan out and, and to have these, uh, this event planned out because it, it's not, from my understanding, it's not just, you know, all the events this year. They look forward to multiple years out on making sure that they have, uh, people coming, that everything they need for, for those events. Whether it's five years, three years, two years, you know, whatever, they're, they're asking for that. You know, I don't take a position one way or the other, other than the legal aspect of what should be in an agreement if you are going to, uh, to do that type of arrangement.
I mean, we do own, just, we, I mean, as a city, we own property, I mean, much like a property manager. And if somebody was gonna come and rent something from your place, they would wanna sort of lease on something. So they could plan ahead that they could work that way. It's, it's, that's a bit of a stretch, but it's kind of the same. I, again, I don't have necessarily a preference on years. Um, I don't, I wouldn't like.
Okay, Mayor, can we just inter, interject here? Okay, let's do it. Uh, we can compromise. Do it on a yearly basis. It's just for me to, what, for five years, it's just not feasible. And you know what? The management of that organization could change. Something could happen. We have Wi-Fi yourself up. Uh, they've, they've had it for 20 some years. You won't have it for the next 20 years. You always get priority. They always have given you options. It's always, it's just for me, it just doesn't seem right. It's not right.
Just to be honest, they haven't always had a priority. If you remember back during David Smith years, it was, oh, and they cut down a lot of the. Yeah, I was around at that time. Cause I was actually on the board at that time.
Okay, but I know, and, and believe me, I.
You have to be careful about this. We are always too by heart.
Yeah.
Okay, we are not.
But, but let me tell you, she, she does it, she does a good job. Like I said, from a, from a business point of view, I'm speaking as Mel or as, as a council person. It's a great event, brings a lot of people. We all benefit from it. But it just, I just don't see leasing this into five years. It's just, it's just too much. And let me tell you, uh, what Fred said, and I've heard a lot of people come in and they're just saying, literally saying, how are we giving all those parts for, for five years? "How are we giving all those parks for, for five years?" You know, in advance, not knowing what could happen with that organization. Because organization, when you're giving them those permits, when they come to us and they apply for a license, we usually, they have to apply, we have to make a decision to have seen, have done a good job. We base it on that. But once you've given that, you've lost, you've lost that, that ability to judge those events. Maybe you have a bad year, that we have to recalculate. We think, I, I just, five years is too long? Not even in rental, you rent for five years. You, you rent yearly.
We're, we're considering a, a thirty-year lease with the USPS. So, we, we do do long-term...
Yeah, but not, well, not, not with an event that we get fifty-five dollars for, whatever.
Anna, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to point out that there, there is a successors and assigns provision in the agreement. It cannot be assigned or, or turned over to any other organization or entity. Um, you can include termination clauses if you want to. We could reduce it. But again, it's totally a, a council decision as to what you want to do with this. Because as was mentioned, this could set a precedent for other organizations that have long-term events, longstanding events that have been in the community for, for decades to ask for similar, similar treatment.
Okay. Well, I was going to, um, disagree with Mel that BBI would always get the priority because they haven't always been given the priority. And like you said, like, you know, if management or, you know, the organizers, you know, they, they change hands or whatnot, then this agreement wouldn't go with them. They'd have to, you know, come up and, and get another one. But, uh, I mean, I don't have an issue with the five-year agreement, only because it is a big event. And we've seen it, most of us have seen it from the very humble beginnings to where it is now. And they are, the day that the race ends, they are already planning ahead for the, for the next year. And so, um, I just blame Ramon because this is all coming up because of him. But I, I, but I don't have an issue because I, you know, we always ask for long-term plans. You know, we ask for five-year plans or ten-year plans. Whether we're here or not, I mean, that's what we do as an organization. We try to plan ahead. I mean, we talked about that earlier this meeting. So I don't, I mean, I don't have an issue with the five-year agreement.
Any...
I just, I just want to state that it's just unfortunate that it has reached this point. Because for thirty years, for twenty years plus, we've never had this issue. These people have been able to come in, be benefits for, you know, the things that benefit our town, you know, that benefit the businesses, that provide, um, entertainment, I guess not for a better thing. And then all of a sudden, this past, you know, few years, we're, we're having to deal with this high grading of events. And it's wrong. I just wish there was some way that we didn't have to be so extreme. And people didn't have to come in here and ask for five-year contracts, because they shouldn't have to. They should be able to go in and do what they've done year after year. And I...
And if council wants, you know, we can take this back, rework it, put in some termination language, make it very clear with regard to successors and assigns, reduce it to two or three years or whatever council would...
And the parks, for example, the, the, the properties, like, you know, because if you, if you see here, for me, okay, Higgins Health Park, Grassy Park, City Park, various streets of Old Bisbee. We have an, I don't, I mean, what street? Uh, various parking spaces. Uh, you are, you are literally, literally given so much of the city. When, when we're saying, and we don't define, various parking spaces, various, uh, uh, streets of Old Bisbee. We have to be very careful with this. Not because of that. Like I said, I reiterate, this is one of the best events. I love it. I love the, the organizer. It's not. But I'm, I'm putting my council, uh, person hat here, and I have to look at, at all this. When we're saying we're going to give you all this parking, all this, you are literally, uh, like, uh, uh, we have a constituent came in today and said, "You, I'm Mel, are you leasing Old Bisbee for five years?" That's what I was told.
It's one day.
It's one day.
Yeah, one day, four days.
And, and you understand all this...
No, it says forty-eight hours. Some of these, you have to present on forty-eight hours. Yeah, well, for, you know, forty-eight hours, what happens before forty-eight hours? They're signed at the parking, you can park here. So it starts two days before it starts. If you can clarify this and make sure, like, just for one day, then I'm okay with it. But the, the concern that I have, that I receive from the residents of Old Bisbee, this is what I'm talking about.
It, and I, and I agree.
Thank you.
It's my understanding, though, that this is what they do annually anyways, that they set up two days before. Because if you have people who are parked overnight or parked there for multiple days, you have to have notice so that you don't have those vehicles. We, we define it as the Bisbee 1000 route because it's a historical route. It's been in place for thirty years. So, addressing various streets of Old Bisbee used for the Bisbee 1000 route is a very specific designation without having to say, this fifty feet of this street plus, you know, and, and going into the extreme details of almost like a, a legal description of, of where the, the Bisbee 1000 route is. It, it's a historical route. It's, the route hasn't changed in, in thirty years. Um, and this is what they currently do for their annual event. They set up two days before. They, they do this now. Their only request is that they have this agreement with the city that they have the ability, the right to put on this event once every year for the next five years. Like I said, if you want, we can take it back and we can work, rework it with termination provisions, make sure that the assignment clause is, is spelt out, make sure that, uh, you know, we can put in some wording that, you know, the, the forty-eight hours, to extent possible, doesn't hinder the use of, of the parks. I see the issue with the, the parking, you, you got to make sure that the cars that are parked there have sufficient notice to be able to move as well. So...
Twenty-four hours is the day of the event. Twenty-four hours is the one day before. And you need the one day before to set up something that handles over a thousand people. So, I don't see forty-eight hours as being a horrendous... I bet you need forty-eight hours to set up something useful.
Yeah?
No, absolutely.
That's all. Anyway, what, I think we've...
July fourth.
Can I add something? Well, no. One year I did volunteer in the forty-eight hours. It wasn't like the whole, stuff was put in parking lots. They deliver the barriers and, and then that night, like at five o'clock that night, we started laying everything out for the next day until like two o'clock in the morning. And then we had to be back the next morning at five. And, and, I mean, so it's not really like it's blocking the whole thing.
Yeah, no, I, I don't have a problem with this, but we just, these things have to be clarified. Because when people read, read this, and you guys know, when I mention things, I just want to clarify those. My, my biggest issue is the ownership. Uh, like, unless they said, council people, I, I did the five years, it's, it's too long. We can do it on a yearly basis with the option to renew it. So this will, we are evaluating on a yearly basis. I think that will be, and then I have no problem. Because I said, this is one of the best. Or on best managed, I have no question, no problem with it as, as a merchant.
Well, I, I wouldn't say we should do this for a year because it'd be just what we know.
No, so they got it in for a year and then they renew it. Yeah, that's...
Or we do a, a multiple year with a termination, and if you don't want it, you terminate it.
Okay, that's, that's another option. Yeah, that would satisfy some of it.
Can I ask for clarification on one thing?
Yeah.
So, some of the heartburn that's, that's being expressed about this whole thing is, what does it do for the city? Are they fixing the stairs? And that needs to be clarified because a long time ago in a kingdom far away, and Anna probably remembers this, they did donate money for the stairs to be cleared, to be fixed. And where did the money go? Into the general fund, correct?
Well, no, actually, I set up the stair fund.
Did you?
When I was on council.
Okay.
And that, and all that money went there and it got used to fix the stairs that were on the, the course. And some other ones, like to the New Line House and some of the other ones, but, and, and I wasn't there, but then they decided that their whole idea was recreation, not necessarily infrastructure. So, that's there.
That really was my question. Where does all the money go and how is it utilized in the city?
It'd have to go to their Bible 13C, and they have it all listed there.
I wish, it's a private organization. It's a private event. It's not a city-sponsored event. It's not an event that the city produces. It's an event that Bisbee votes for.
Correct.
So those are...
But I think it needs to be said that there is a lot, like, there are a lot of places that money does go throughout the community that does good for people in the community.
I mean, your exercise, it's up at Higgins Park. It's a donated, we cover over it.
High school.
It might be beneficial to go to answer that question because it's under the circus model. Um, when I moved here, I was hit with that. I said, "Wow, this is amazing event." And they said, "Well, you know, the history of it was, the stairs, and they don't do anything." So maybe a little bit more for their own PR outside of, I mean, the people that help to live with them.
It, it typically, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, um, it, it typically goes on, uh, that discussion goes on every year. You know, it, we, we all know that there's a long and proud tradition, uh, in, in this community that, um, once, once we think something is so, then it remains so.
Yes.
And so, like, every year, I, I, I hear the same thing you hear every single year. And, uh, for at least ten of the last seventeen years, um, I have heard what is now Bisbee Vogue state clearly that they're not planning to fix stairs with the money. And we approve their event knowing that. So, but there is a lot of money that does go out to the community. Some of it does come back to the city.
Anyway, we're a little bit off the actual agenda here, talking about where money goes. That's not before us. So, I'd like to get back on to, uh, where we are. Um, I guess...
So, yeah, if you want, just a motion to table it to the next meeting to bring it back with some modifications would be appropriate. If that's what council wants.
Either that or I can run it through and see if it fails, but no. Just kidding. Um, let's, um, I'll make a motion to table this, to come back and bring it back at the next council meeting with some possible suggestions that have been heard here about tightening up the, uh, the transition of it. And, and does anyone else have anything else they would like to tighten this up with?
Yeah, the things that was mentioned by, uh, by Joe, I mean, uh, and just come, Anna, you know, you have the brain that knows legality. If you've done contract, come up with something that's, that's, it's good for her, good for the, for the, for the event. Like I said, I'm a big supporter of it. And at the same time, it's good for the city and for the concern that some of the community members have about this.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we'll ever get over all the concerns.
Yeah, 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 but some, some.
But if we have a, have a way that, uh, it somehow transitions into something we, that, that we as main council don't like, we can give them a sixty-day notice or something.
Yeah.
However that works. Okay. Uh, move to just be tabled and be brought back to us. I have a second?
Second.
A motion, second to table, item number six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose me. The ayes have it, so move. Okay, on to seven. This is discussion of possible thorough ordinance O-2303. This is authorizing the sale and transfer of certain surplus property, uh, being known as parcel number 10399034E, located on OK Street. Mr. Poplin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we had an agenda item, uh, two weeks ago, uh, from Mr. and Mrs. Corvino, uh, for the purpose of appealing, um, the, uh, what did I do? Administrative denial, the administrative denial, uh, which was done for the purpose of bringing it to you so you could consider, uh, the, uh, very small piece of triangular shaped property of that provides him with access to his property. Um, it's back before you this evening, meaning in the form of an ordinance, and staff recommends approval.
Any questions? This is got eighty-three, some on feet, including Sarah. Let's get it over here. All right, I'll take the motion. Give me a break.
I move that we approve ordinance zero dash twenty-two dash zero three, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property, APM 103 dash ninety-nine dash zero three four E, located on OK Street.
Second?
Again, a motion, second to approve ordinance O-2303, authorizing the sale and transfer of surplus property. Local, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember, uh, Giacominio, sorry. Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Soweet?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. My motion passes six-zero, so move. Um, moving on, we have one last item, item number eight. This is discussion of possible approval of the, of an amendment to the RFP for the Hillcrest building. I guess we'll let Alissa take this one. Thank you. Being patient. I knew I moved the other one in front of yours, but...
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, we took your direction very seriously last week when we, um, came back to you with the failure of the last developer for Hillcrest. And we have revamped, what you have in front of you is a revamped RFP to sell the building. A couple of things have happened this week. We have rewritten that RFP. RFP, we, um, have gone back. I know, I think it was councilmember, uh, so, so it talked about getting an appraisal. I will tell you that I had quite a discussion with Valbridge, who's done the two appraisals in the past on Hillcrest. And we found the more cost-effective way of amending the second appraisal at about half the price as opposed to redoing something that's been done twice in less than three years. So, so rather than the usual four to seven thousand, that'll be about seventeen hundred dollars. Um, the thing with this, um, new bid, once approved, it can go out quite quickly. Um, we can't, we are looking at most likely a two-week timeline for turnaround, just for purchase. Um, what else can I tell you? Um, we're just, we're ready to, ready to let it go. And I know Joe wants to talk a little bit about adding some developer agreements, um, in the, in the notice so that we have some assurances that the property will be developed in a timely manner and that they have the money to purchase it.
We just want to play, want to put a, a, a notice in this RFP that these, the, the winning bidder would be required to enter into a development agreement with the city to ensure that the property is developed out within a reasonable time period. You don't want somebody just buying the property and holding on to it. You want, in, in the way you accomplish that is you have a development agreement which runs with the land and binds in to do certain obligations, um, in a timely manner.
It's, it becomes an attractive nuisance that it just sits there and developers, so we don't want to, we don't want to anticipate an, an attractive nuisance, right?
I just wanted to make sure that the, the council's clear, we will be updating the RFP language to include that requirement, that there will be a requirement for the winning bidder to enter into a, a development agreement with the city.
And, and a date on it. It's open right now.
The only other issue I wanted to bring up that we hadn't used previously was the fact that Hillcrest is in an opportunity zone. It's the only property around here in an opportunity zone. That is a designation by the state legislature that lets...
What's your question?
Lets a developer, it's for, um, for an incentive for a developer to go into, um, a low-income area, and they can defer their capital gains tax for a certain amount of time. I'm, I would say I'm not sure how many years. So that the money can go directly into development. So this is, this is done by the legislature. And so I've included that in the, the RFP this time, hoping to attract those types of developers.
Okay, questions?
Uh, I have a question. Uh, what, uh, how will, uh, how will this be advertised? Uh, so we have more options or more buyers, opportunities to get, if you can give us an idea?
We typically go to two papers. We'll do the territorial in Tucson and the, um, weekly Bisbee paper.
Okay. Uh, is there, uh, other options to put it in the loop, where it goes nationally or LoopNet?
I mean, we, we could do a Phoenix paper or, I mean, yes, I mean, we could expand that. that, yes.
Yeah, because I think the more options, with the more potential for buyers, I think that would be a good thing, so I think that should be very steady and look at.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Now, now that we've changed the criteria to some degree for potential bidders, I know that Melissa has already heard from three potential developers for sure, at least one of which is coming back and bidding again, who have been out before, and possibly two. So, interest is out there, I think, what kept some folks in the past was the requirement that they develop it as affordable as possible.
Yes.
Yeah, we gave it our best twice.
Yes, we did. Oh my God, yes, we did. But yes, absolutely, we'll look into expanding, expanding the newspaper, I'm always sure of that.
More interest, the higher the price.
Yeah, exactly.
Kind of, mine kind of piggybacked on Mal, is there like national, like real estate, I mean, like Zillow, you can house here, I mean, do they have something like that for this type of properties, is what I'm trying to say.
The one thing that we could consider, I don't know if it's ever been used here before, but I know as a council aide in Tucson, we had our own network of council aides that were nationwide, that we would advertise things on or get information from, say, say in Tucson or whatever, I was researching some sort of ordinance, I would go out to this network and say, okay, what did you guys do? And there was a listing there that you could put properties on, yes, so, I mean, we could consider that, absolutely.
Give it your best.
Thank you.
So, did you say that you eliminated the affordable housing department?
Only the word.
I'm good with that.
Any other questions? I'll maintain a motion.
I move to approve the amended RFP for the Hillcrest building.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve an amendment, an amended RFP for Hillcrest, for the Hillcrest building. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. There are none, the ayes have it, so move. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the last one being number nine is discussion of possible approval of reconditioning the clam press, let filter press, filter press, for the San Jose wastewater plant, I know what it is, and it's ugly, but...
Easy way of putting it, just belt press.
Belt press, there we go.
So, this belt press is the original belt press from twenty thousand six, when the plant was built, and Jacobs seems to be doing, has been doing a good job trying to keep it running, they've been replacing bearings and doing some repairs to this belt press. It's at the point where we need to move a little bit further and do some regular reconditioning of this belt press. It is a sole source, because the Alpha Laval, the manufacturer, will only warranty the parts if it's installed by their people, pretty much. So, this comes out to ninety-one thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars, and that is to, to do the reconditioning of eight-inch plane rollers, eleven-inch dry rollers, twelve-inch plane pressure rollers, and some other rollers, pretty much. It squishes all the water out of the sludge, where the sludge can be lighter going to the landfill, and we're not transferring a bunch of water with the sludge, so. That's pretty much what it is, it's something that is in dire need, we don't want to have any problems in the future with this.
What's the warranty? How long's it gonna last?
The warranty for parts are one year. It's not the best, but it is a warranty.
Well, it's the exact same warranty we got, for the first time.
So, in the proposal, it gives the fiscal impact, and then it says the quoted price does not include any bonding, local, state, or federal taxes, permits, or other fee. Are we gonna have to pay taxes on this because, or anything else that's gonna affect how much it costs?
You will pay sales tax.
Sales tax, yes.
Okay, yeah, and so is that into the fiscal impact that's before us, or we don't know yet?
We don't, that is not something that was given at this point.
So, it's gonna, the price is gonna go up?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Another question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, this is, Matt, this is gonna put you in a deficit now?
In that specific line item, yes.
So, where are you gonna get the money from?
I, in the, in my actual budget, in the whole budget, I still have the money that I'm gonna have for this.
So, you're gonna, I mean, so that money will be transferred from somewhere else, because it's gonna put you negative six, as per this sixty-five thousand overall?
Yes.
My question then, what, you know me, I know we always talk about this and we laugh about it, why wasn't this budgeted for? Why are we ending up in a deficit so soon into the year?
This was an unknown.
Wow, and other thing, we don't know, wait for the last, I'm sorry, so we just started the year and we are sixty-five thousand in the deficit?
We're at fifty-nine percent of the year.
Well, whatever, fifty-nine, sixty, but sixty-five thousand, you're gonna be negative, and it's gonna be probably seventy thousand by the time, unless they ask you pay the additional additional.
As of my whole budget, this is not, I don't have, my number's in front of me, but my, the wastewater department's budget is millions.
What does it put you sixty-five thousand in that one line item?
Well, I don't know, not the whole, my whole budget for that part is not under, just this one line item.
There will be, you know, even though that line item would be expended, we will be able to transfer funds, as you said, from other line items, and we're not finished for the year generating revenues.
So, that will be taken care of, will be covered eventually?
Yes, it'll be covered by the end of the year.
Yes.
And we also, there is some reserves actually, in case the big one happens. This isn't the big one, yeah?
Well, I think this is a big one.
Yeah, it's a big one.
Everything over there is big.
Yeah, yeah. And the other, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just wanna, you know, let's, we need a little perspective because the wastewater treatment plant was built before two thousand six, it was, actually went online in May of two thousand and six. It's a factory, okay, just like any other industrial plant in the nation, and so its product is sludge, okay, that's about the nicest way I can put it. And this is actually before any drying takes place, this is the last step in the process, this is what squeezes out the water, so that when we take the sludge to the landfill, you don't pay more for water that we can reutilize on the waste. Everything in that plant is a very expensive place, from the human vice where the stuff comes in and takes all the big stuff out and separates it, to the belt press which finishes squeezing out the final sludge product, and everything in between. There will be other large expenses, and we're going to be looking very hard leading up to next year's budget, because there are a couple of what will be fairly large expenses that we are just now calculating the cost of, so that we can put those in the budget for next year, so that we can actually do the maintenance. I can't guarantee every device in that plant is not gonna fail unexpectedly, that's exactly what happened here. But we do, and with our contractors, they do a very good job of planning ahead for us and telling us when something looks like it's gonna be a year out. This one just had a catastrophic failure, fortunately, we were able to, with the welding machine, and by buying some new bearings, we were able to get it back together, it's still operating in a somewhat hobbled fashion, but it's still operating.
Any questions?
Okay.
Is everybody bypassed that process and just take it out and naturally air dry it, or does it have to go through that? The reason I ask that question, is it possible to take half of what we're processing, just to give it life?
I can give you the answer to that, and historically, there was what we call drying beds.
Right.
They were designed in this plant, they were never built, they don't exist, in fact, part of the area where the drying beds would have been are now covered with solar panels. Someone made a conscious decision not to expend that money at that time, and, you know, basically, if you put wet sludge on the ground, I'm not sure, number one, the EPA is gonna be too fond of that idea, but even if we did, it will take a fairly long time for it to dry out, depending, of course, on the weather.
If it rains.
Yeah, I was just curious, because other places have the beds.
Yeah, one thing that Jacobs is doing to help, is they are going and taking the backhoe into the container that they put it in, and trying to stir it around to get as much water evaporated as possible, so they're doing their best with what they, what the plant is.
It all ends up in containers.
Yes, roll-off containers that are sealed.
And then, Mayor, the last thing, I was, I forgot the last part of my comments, and that is that you can expect the useful life of a wastewater treatment plant at twenty years. Okay, so from two thousand six, plus twenty, that gets out to twenty twenty cents, typically they'll last a little bit longer, but, for instance, when I got to Winslow, we were at that point with their wastewater treatment plant, which is a similar plant to the one we have, and over five years, we spent about four million dollars, basically replacing all machinery in that plant. So, so we, long term, there's gonna be more large expenses, I guarantee it.
Well, I remember last big one was some little compartment they had to get down into and redo, that was two hundred thousand or something.
Well, no, that was thirty-six thousand just for the inspection.
Yeah.
So, that's coming, that's what we're gonna be putting into the budget period.
Okay, any other questions?
This last one, with any other bits, we just, that's the only, I mean, I read it through this, is that the only manufacturer we can buy from because of the nature of this?
The pressure of the plant, not the plant, the belt press.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify this, because I didn't see other beds on this.
Yeah, and that's why I was saying that we do have a sole source letter in there, that's because of the warranty.
Yeah, so that's...
And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll say the quiet part out loud, it won't be too far down the road, we're probably gonna need to consider an increase. We've gone for how many years, or how long? Twenty thirteen, that's historic.
Yeah.
Okay, the first time I worked here, we increased the rates on that sewer plant every single year.
Just like really put a damper on the end of the...
I mean, okay, so we caught a little bit of criticism tonight, for that meantime, you know?
Yeah, I'd rather have this than not have something in the future, although we know about it upfront, I agree.
Okay, well then, I'll take a motion, upfront.
Upfront. I move to approve the reconditioning of the clamp press, belt filter press for the San Jose water, wastewater plant.
Second.
I have a motion, second, to approve the reconditioning of the belt press at the San Jose wastewater plant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. There are none, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We handled number ten, so last will be sitting out of here.
I believe, Mr. Mayor, I've said quite enough tonight, I'll pass.
Thank you.
All right, and, hi. Still the person's not here.
I move that we adjourn, second.
I have a motion, second, to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. There are none, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.